Something missing from this debate which greatly disturbs me. And that is, we're being offered, in the sense of the old proverb, "A simple solution for a complex problem." And you know the proverb says that's wrong. We're being urged to cut to a level simply that won't require an override. It'd be very nice, but what are we giving up? I haven't heard anything really specific on what that means. Now, that's probably the time...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
If Mr. Hunter wants to speak as a citizen personally, he should do it from the floor, not as a selectman. Thank you.[42.26][42.26](APPLAUSE)
Mr. Moderator, I was about to comment about the process that we're going through.
Go right ahead, Mr. Hunter.
The mistake that we've made...
Let me stop you though, one moment, if I may. I just had another message. License number, Massachusetts 5169JN. It's a Dodge van. It is blocking another vehicle, and it must be moved out. A Dodge van, 5169JN. Excuse me, Mr. Hunter. Go right ahead.
The mistake that we, the collective leadership, have made, I think, this year, is bringing these budgets to town meeting with an operating override planned or proposed after town meeting. So we do not have an A and B budget. And nobody has, that I have heard, has outlined the specifics of a B budget. And that concerns me, because it seems to me we're here about the education of the children, not a formula. Thank you.[103.54][103.54](APPLAUSE)
From the Finance Committee? Mr. Evans?
The Finance Committee's position on this article is the same as it was on the local schools. They did not recommend it.
It's open for general debate now. Mr. Cadillac?
I will again offer an amendment. And for those of you who are concerned, I will not speak to it for more than a couple of minutes, but I will read the amendment for you. I move to delete the amount in the original motion, $12,524,907, and insert in its place the amount of $11,836,300. And again, further to delete all the words after its entirety. It's the same amendment as the previous motion. I hope everybody's clear on it, and the numbers are in this flyer.
Amendment is certainly unacceptable form. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Cadillac, to your amendment.
I will not use the view graph. I will simply point out that, as I said here, having picked up this tonight, I just added up a couple of things. The number of certified staff, as shown in here, is to be increased by 14.02, not the 12.5 that was shown by the schools. And over two years, the certified staff, I mean, the total staff, sorry, is increasing by 19.6 for an enrollment increase of 239. You can all do the numbers. They're in here. Once again, the contention that somehow we're barely keeping up does not hold up. We are hiring a lot of staff. That's what's driving these budgets. It's unsustainable. We will be back for more overrides. We will be frankly asked to support more and more of a level of staffing, not education, but staffing, that simply does not make sense to me. And remember, please, that these numbers do not include an additional 20 or so people that we do have that are paid off budget. I will not go through the rest of the arguments. The enrollment projections that I showed you for the last many years, that you always see just the tail end of, are the same for the junior high and the high school as they are for the elementary grades with a six-year offset. We have seen much higher numbers before, and it's a personal judgment whether the school systems back in those years were better or worse. There are people sitting in this audience, I know as a fact, who were students at those times, who can speak to that from personal experience. Everything I've heard is that they did okay. And yes, I do want to make one more comment to... Because as Mr. Prendel will pointed out, I'm also very concerned about this contention that this is somehow a young versus old, or pro-children, anti-children, pro-education as opposed to low taxes situation. It is not. It is a community problem. It is a problem for people who simply must make difficult judgments as to how much they can afford for what. Age is not the issue. Please remember that. And I would ask you once again to please support this amendment, which would not require the override, at least for this part. Thank you.[363.31][363.31](APPLAUSE)
Okay, once again, we'll use pro and con microphones. The people who are pro the amendment or pro the article, pro microphones, back microphone, and two side microphones. Con amendment or con article will be the ones on this side in the front microphone. We will now take a con amendment, and I'll take the gentleman at the side microphone. Mr. Stuntz, are you to correct a factual...
I think the town meeting should know what happens if they amend a regional article, a regional assessment.
Sure. I'm going to ask, there is a question that has come up with respect to whether you can in fact amend a regional article such as this. The answer to the question is, yes, you can. However, if you do, based on what occurs, certain other things can follow. And I will ask the town council to explain what will happen if in fact we amend this article with respect... I'm assuming you're talking about a potential override or potential additional meetings that may have to be held between the parties at the region. So I will ask Mr. Callahan, who has volunteered not to take any pay for the next year...[458.62][458.62](LAUGHTER) No, he didn't. That's not true.[462.12][462.12](LAUGHTER) Mr. Callahan. He hasn't spoken yet.
The microphone on?
It's on now.
A vote to amend and decrease a regional assessment is in effect a vote to disapprove the budget as presented by the regional school committee. And that involves a process. First, it goes back to the regional school committee, who can reconsider, amend, and resubmit a budget. That also goes back to the town. This whole process, there's two iterations. The third iteration for a two-town region such as Acton-Buxborough is a combined meeting of both towns. So there's a three-step process that the statutes provide for a region. Hopefully, there is some agreement before that point, but it is a very complicated and tedious process to go through.
Do you have a question, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I do.
Yes, go ahead with your question.
The question for Mr. Callahan is that the way in which the original article was moved, a certain amount of money, that is contingent on an override of a certain amount of money, is that going to require these steps back and forth? Because the amendment, as I understand, just reverts to the smaller sum that was included in the original wording of the article.
I'm sure I understand the question. The regional budget is for the $12,500...
Whatever. Contingent on an override of a certain amount. That's the original motion.
Yep. And Mr. Cadillac's motion amends the total amount appropriated or assessed to the town. So it is a reduction in the school committee's budget.
Mr. Lewis, what is your question?
If the override is not approved by the voters of the town, therefore, the budget will go to the lesser of the two numbers. Am I correct? So the way in which you told us about this, it would suggest that if it's amended, then it will go to the lower number of the two numbers. And therefore, it has to go through this exquisite process that you described. However, if the referendum on the override is not successful, it will go back to that lower number as well. And so aren't these the same thing? And given the way in which the original motion was worded, therefore, the complexities of the two approaches are precisely the same, whatever they are?
I think it's important that we really understand what is likely to happen before we continue debate. So we're going to spend a couple of minutes crafting the words appropriately. It's a confusing subject, as you know. It is certainly acceptable to amend the article, but it does cause certain things to happen. And I think you really need to know what those are in a clear way. It is not something that lends itself to clarity easily, however. Do you have a question, Mr. Lewis?
Basically, the simplest way I can state the question is that if the referendum on the override, if this article is approved as written originally, and if the referendum fails, then aren't these complex processes that he was describing, don't they have to come into play the same as if we approve the amendment?
I'm not going to answer that. I have an answer, but boy, I don't want to answer it.
Yes, that is right. The net effect of not approving the override is to give the regional school committee less money than they've asked for. And that returns the ball to their court.
So therefore, the approving of the amendment has really no different effect on any of the processes that will have to take place. So it's not really an issue for us. That is my conclusion. It's not an issue for us in that respect, whether we approve or do not, whether, if we approve the amendment. Not an issue. Processes are the same.
Well, there won't be an override vote if the amendment is approved.
If the override fails, yes.
If I understand, let me try this and see if this is correct. Mike, listen carefully, because I may not say this correctly. If the amendment passes and the school committee has less money approved at this town meeting than they requested, they must go back in joint session with Buxborough, and they can, at that time, adjust their budget. That is one thing they can do. I believe they could also refuse to do that, and that would create another process. I wouldn't speculate at all what they would do. However, if you vote for this amendment, it will require the school committee to go back in joint session, or the school committee to go back and address the issue of reducing the budget. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct.
I won't ask if we're all clear. Go ahead. The last one, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, this will be the last one.
Okay.
And I'll just put an "and" on what you just said. And if we pass the original article, and if the town turns down the override, the school committee will have to go back and do the same thing that they would have to do...
Well, they have to do something.
The same thing, because they would have less money.
Well, it depends on how much the override is for, and we're not certain of that yet. So yes, they would have to do the same process. I'm going to recognize, let's see, where am I? Pro or con? I don't know. I'm going to take the gentleman at the side. You, sir.
The people at the back have been standing, waiting longer than I have. I yield my time to them.
I'm sorry?
Thank you. I yield my time to the people at the microphone. Behind me, they've been standing there longer than I have.
Oh, that's very gentlemanly of you, sir. Nobody else in the room would do that. Gentleman at the back. Thank you, sir.
Thank you both, gentlemen. My name is Ed Adelman. I live at 534 Old Stone Brook Road. And I just simply wanted to say that I'm standing in opposition to this amendment, as I did the prior one, because in neither situation do we see a proposed budget. We see a shoehorn into an amount of money that will not require an override, but we do not see how the education of our children will be addressed specifically in what will be funded and what will not be funded. And I think that's the minimum to expect when a monetary motion is amended from the floor of town meeting. I vote no.
In favor of the amendment, Mr. Swenson?
Hi, Mr. Moderator. This amendment is the first faint glimmer of common sense and fiscal responsibility I have seen at this town meeting. The budget as proposed is ill-conceived, bloated, and out of control. I think we should vote for this amendment.
Opposed to the amendment, the lady at the back.
Helen Probst, Putter Drive. Basically, my con status to the amendment is that if we say no to the amendment, we still have the option to go back to this original number that the amendment is setting by defeating the override. You still have your rights, your privileges, your choice later. It's not saying, yes, we're going to spend this money. No, we're not going to spend this money. You still have the option later at the override. So I would say vote no on the amendment.
In favor of the amendment, the gentleman at this microphone.
Arkady Konevsky, 19 Johnsfield. I'm not pro nor con. I would like to ask a question. I heard that when we were discussing the Acton schools, that a large majority, a large number of the teachers will retire over the next couple of years and will have to be replaced. I don't recall exactly the number stated, but it was in the 40s percentile. And I'm wondering if the same thing will be faced with Acton-Buxborough regional schools, and what impact it will have on the budget, both the school budget and on the town budgets overall, over the next couple of years? And I'll take it sitting down.
Mr. Stuntz?
As I understand the question, and tell me if I'm wrong, the question, as I understand it, is you were told that there would be a goodly number of retirements in the Acton public schools over the next number of years. You're asking if that same circumstance will be occurring at the Acton-Buxborough regional schools, and what effect that will have on the budget?
Correct.
Okay. Yes. I believe, George Frost can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we're looking at, over the next eight years, approximately 40% of our staff may well be retiring at Acton-Buxborough. Yes, that does have an effect on the budget. What that does is, those are our higher-paid teachers. We will be probably replacing them with a little more less-expensive teachers. However, you also have to realize that when you get a teacher in at the first level, their raises are higher in the first 10 years. So you have to balance those factors. So that's, I can't tell you exactly how it will impact the budget, but those are the two major factors involved in the impact of the budget. Also, the impact on who we hire, you have to recognize that some of the systems that we compare ourselves to, who have comparable admissions to colleges, comparable SATs, comparable accolades from colleges, that sort of thing, those, two of those systems, Lincoln-Sudbury and Concord-Carlyle, have four classes that a teacher teaches rather than five. And so we are going to be, over the next eight years, in the market for teachers. And we're in the market for good teachers, obviously. We have a lot of good teachers, and we'd like to keep that percentage up.
In favor of the amendment, Mr. Cadillac?
Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to respond to Mr. Adelman's comment that anybody who makes an amendment should produce a budget. I thought about that, but then I also vividly recalled a criticism that was directed at anyone who dared to suggest how the school committee should actually spend their money. And also the fact that the school committee has not produced a budget which would occur if the override fails and the lower number takes place, either at the local level or the region. So I thought it wiser, given that the school committee, of course, has fiscal autonomy and will spend the money that we vote any way they see fit anyway, which is fine, to refrain from the temptation to offer any suggestions as how the budget may be framed, although I assure you that I'm quite capable of producing him. And if Mr. Adelman wants to see him, I will do so.
Do you have a point of order?
A point of order. I'd like to understand why Mr. Cadillac can respond to non-factual responses when the school committee was limited to only factual responses.
Well, he waited in line. He waited his turn, so I let him do that. I'll recognize the gentleman.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cadillac. You were not finished.
Was Mr. Greg...
I'm sorry, you were not finished. Go ahead and complete your remarks, Mr. Cadillac.
Well, I was just about completed. I was offering the opportunity to Mr. Adelman to see me on one-on-one, and I will explain to him how I would see the either budget could be put together at the lower numbers. And anyone else. Thank you.
Now, opposed to the amendment, the gentleman who was a gentleman?
Yes.
Or is? Side microphone.
Jack Appelman, Spring Hill Road. I wanted to make a couple of points that I think will bring us a little bit more together as a community, even though there are obviously differing viewpoints here. But let me start where I think is really the beginning. Dory Hunter pointed out, this is a complex problem. You can't solve it with a simple solution. And I would suggest the problem is larger than the school's question itself. Last night, the town operating budget was essentially approved based on a platform that we had to view this as a total community solution. Taxes are high in Acton. I moved here in December, and I will state flatly, despite Mr. Cadillac's objections, that the high tax rate was a significant factor in my wife and my decision whether or not to move to Acton at all. Should the tax rates go up, I'm sure future buyers will also have similar concerns. However, we did move here. One of the reasons we moved was because we'd heard the school systems were good. Now, I would say that people are willing to pay for good value. In general, when they buy a home, they factor a number of things into that. They obviously are discouraged by high taxes. It turns out that the tax rate from the town we moved from, Wellesley, is a little over $11 per thousand. So you can imagine our sticker shock when we faced 18. It strikes me that the natural concern of many of the people here is high taxes, not good schools, bad schools alone, but factor that in with high taxes. And it poses the question of why the tax rate is so high. Now, we could go into a discussion of where the tax rate comes from, what it's based on. One of the single factors which contributes most to the high tax rate is the fact that it's a combined tax rate for business and residential. Most towns split their tax rates, and Acton is very unusual in not doing so. So I would argue that we should consider the larger question. It's beyond the debate here of why we have a high tax rate. Let me make a couple of points, though, in favor of school quality. The lamplighter perhaps exaggerates that there are a number of things which might go wrong if we don't continue to fund our schools. I would say it is too exaggerated the way it was portrayed, but it's a matter of degree. You are seeing in this community, people who have lived here a long time, but the buyers who move in are largely motivated by the value of the houses they find, the community they move into, the quality of the services, the schools, as I mentioned. And they come from communities of workforce, which is high-tech in nature from around $495.128, or able to commute to Boston. These are typically shrewd buyers. They're going to be discouraged by bad conditions in the town. Let me question a couple of assumptions which have been, I think, proposed, particularly by Mr. Cadillac, but in other parts of the discussion. First, other towns are doing fine, so if we meet the average, we'll be okay too. I think if you listen to the stories of how schoolteachers are conducting their classes, you might not be surprised to find that many of them are buying school supplies out of their own salaries. This is not an acceptable condition. It's not a standard I want to be compared to. Okay? And I wouldn't be surprised to find that other schoolteachers in other school districts are also re-binding books for their students. Another assumption is that tax rates can only increase to cover expenditures. I think if we were to reexamine how taxes are framed, it's not part of this debate, we might be able to find the tax rates can be brought down. It would, of course, be a long-term process. It would involve reinvigorating business in the town, which, of course, involves other kinds of services that businesses find attractive which are not currently in place, such as effective sewerage. Other assumptions, I'm sorry, but that seems to be the fact. Assumptions also include the fact that the conditions are pretty much the same as in early peak years of enrollment. I would question that. I would say that there are new mandated education parameters which were not in place back then, such as the special education we've talked about. And the cost of materials has skyrocketed, and there's a great deal more sophistication in laboratory equipment and computer equipment, and the maintenance costs in the buildings. And we're also approaching the end of useful life of many of these buildings and requiring new construction. We need to face the fact that schools are more expensive to operate. The teacher salaries are now perhaps more comparable with other workforce components. We need to face that fact, too. And people deserve their salaries. Their teachers deserve their salaries. I don't mean to question that. Finally, I think we should respect the fact that we have a common interest. We don't want a high tax rate. We don't want to pay high taxes. I suggest we try to solve that overall problem. And of course, I'll be retiring in a while, and I wouldn't like my tax rates to be higher. So I sympathize with those who are seniors and who are concerned about this themselves. Thank you.
In favor of the amendment, I think you've been waiting the longest, sir, I believe. In favor of the amendment? Question?
Question.
Go ahead with your question.
Harvey Berliner, 15 Mohegan Road. My wife and I moved here for the roads. The minute you cross over into Concord, you notice a quick lack of quality of the roads. Next time you drive to Concord, make a note of it. I moved to call the question.
I'm sorry, sir. I think you moved the previous question, did you? Is that what you did? That's different from calling the question, but I think I know what you mean. Okay? I'll need a second for that. All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye. Both say nay.
No.
Debate is cut off? We'll vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed to the amendment, say nay. The amendment is lost. We're now back on the motion as unamended. Is there any more discussion on the motion? I see nobody standing. We will vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion as originally read, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Part. 20... Article 25, dealing with the Acton Public Schools' capital improvement projects. Mr. Liberty moves that the town appropriate $550,000 to be expended by the Acton School Committee for the purposes set forth in the article, and to raise such amount, $550,000 be transferred from free cash. Do I hear a second? Mr. Liberty?
Don...
Excuse me?
Do you mind if I speak to it instead?
No, please, you're certainly entitled to it, Ms. Stuntson.
The Acton Public School Capital Warrant Article, original request, the school committee, was $772,800. We reduced that to $550,000. In our continuing campaign to maintain the four elementary schools, which will continue to house students, we are proposing this warrant article. The Acton Public School Committee voted to ask the town meeting to use free cash to fund this. At the top of this list is the Conan septic system. This septic system is failing and needs to be replaced. Other needed items include new fire alarm systems, emergency lights, and basic ventilation needs. You will notice that we are starting to take care of the inadequate electrical system at Miriam, our oldest school, which will stay in use after the twin school is built. Please help us maintain our schools and support this article.
I'm sorry, Ms. Stuntson, you're finished with your presentation? Okay. From the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ashton?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen recommend approval of this article, including the use of free cash to fund these expenditures. Thank you.
And for the Finance Committee, Mr. Evans?
The Finance Committee has long been concerned about the infrastructure of the schools and is quite pleased to see the school committee begin to address these things. This is probably the first of a multi-year program that the schools will have to undertake. This will probably require bonding of these things, because you cannot continue to do this out of your operating expenses without continuing overrides, and there's certainly not enough free cash. So, we certainly support the expenditure of the money. We do not support the way in which it should be funded, and we therefore wish to offer the following amendment, that after the word "raise," would say, "Transfer $175,000 from free cash and to authorize the treasurer to borrow $375,000 under General Laws, Section
I'm sorry, Mr. ... Would you just please repeat that? I was ... Yeah, just please repeat what you said at the end.
To transfer $175,000 from free cash and to authorize the treasurer to borrow $375,000 under General Laws, Section 44.
You made this as an amendment?
Yes.
Do I have a second to the amendment? Okay, we'll speak to the amendment.
The $175,000 you can easily recognize from Ms. Stuntson's slide is to take care of the Conan School's septic system, which we believe needs to be done as soon as the schools can undertake it, and therefore is inappropriate to use free cash. The rest of these things are part of a long-term program, and should, in our opinion, be bonded. What we would hope would happen is that between now and the next town meeting, that the school committee would put together a larger list of projects to be done over a period of time, that they would come back and ask the town to approve the bonding of that entire amount, and the bonding from this year's program could be folded into that, so that it would not have any adverse impact on their activities. The expenditure of $550,000 out of free cash, which is Mr. Liberty's original motion, would deplete our free cash position to a lower level than the Finance Committee believes is prudent for the town when it is about to go out to borrow large sums of money to finance the building of the twin schools and the addition to the Raymond J. Gray Junior High School.
Okay, let me just tell you where I think we're at, Mr. Evans. I just want you to concur in this, if you understand it the same way. This article to pass required a majority vote. Your amendment, because it deals with borrowing, if the amendment passes, and it can pass with a majority vote, will require a two-thirds vote on the article itself. We're both agreement with that? Fine. All right, now we're going to discuss the amendment. Mr. Cadillac?
Mr. Moderator, it's difficult to keep up with the twists and turns of this town meeting, because as of last night, we were not aware of the Finance Committee's recommendation as to how to fund it. I hope everyone appreciates that it would be a whole lot easier to have somewhat more coherent discussion if we could do all of this some weeks ahead of the night of town meeting. But I'm going to speak in favor of this amendment, because it's actually consistent with what ACTS has proposed, although the free cash part, it's a minor amount, the $175,000, we won't start a debate about that. The main point of this amendment is the important one that I think everyone here should understand. There is, my copy is dated from October 97, a multi-page list of all of the major maintenance items of the five elementary school buildings. I guess McCarthy Town gets scratched off at this point, but that's still an open question also. It adds up to many millions of dollars. It was prepared, paid for by the school committee, prepared by OMR, and it has been on the table, basically, as something for the school committee to deal with ever since October 97. And I am among those who favor having a planned multi-year renovation of the existing elementary school buildings, selecting priorities, funding it with a debt which can be well-defined, understood, and the money is dedicated to that purpose, as opposed to being put in the operating budget and disappearing. So, I will speak in favor of this amendment, simply because it is the right direction to go, although it would have been much preferable and possible to have such a multi-year maintenance plan in front of us, so that we don't have to wait for yet another year to see where we're actually going with this. There is no question that these buildings should be maintained. Please support the Finance Committee's amendment. I think this is the correct way to deal with this article. Thank you.
Other comments on the amendment? Anything from the Selectmen, or perhaps not?
I have a question.
Just a moment, ma'am. Your question now, ma'am, go ahead. I think Mr. Hunter's going to a microphone, so go ahead.
I have two questions. Deborah Symes, 109 Concord Road. The first question, Mr. Evans, I'm wondering if we have any sense of if we were to take, I think, the $175 from free cash and then bond out the $375, and I'm not sure of the numbers. What would that, to what level would that bring our free cash, to what percentage?
Mr. Evans?
$1.5 million. Free cash would go down to $1.5 million. It starts out at about $2 million, there's about $221,000 that you voted, the town meeting voted, to spend on municipal functions, and this would take another $175,000 off of that. So, you leave roughly $1.5 million in free cash.
Okay, thank you. And then, my second question is, I'm guessing you may not know the answer to this, but do we have any way of knowing if we do bond out that other amount, what kind, sort of what timeframe we're looking at in terms of getting these other kinds of repairs made? For how long might that defer it, or for what range? You know, from one year to five years, or ...
Mr. Evans?
Well, the actual doing of the repairs depends upon the activities of the school committee. In terms of the financing, they would have the money in the next fiscal year to complete the $550,000 of expenditure that's authorized under the article. The rest of the things, there's probably 10 to 15 years of equivalent levels of spending. How much of that they would propose to bring back to you at next town meeting, I don't know. Some of the 10 to 15 years of expenditures, you're going to have to wait for 15 years, because some of that involves re-roofing things. But it would be probably five to 10 years' worth of work that would be accomplished in two or three years.
Okay, but we wouldn't be able to start for roughly a year or so? Is that what you're saying?
For the, for things which have not, which are on this list that Mr. Cadillac referred to, and that the school committee and the Finance Committee have discussed, which are not literally before you. The $550,000 would be done in the next year.
Okay, thank you.
I'll recognize the lady at the back microphone. Ma'am?
Joyce DeVivo, 7 Lothrup Road. If we pass this amendment and then we pass the article, do we have a guarantee that this money will be used only for this purpose?
I would ask the school committee to respond to that, please.
Like a piece of sware. Yes. These things really need to be done. We're looking at fire alarm systems, we're looking at electrical systems that haven't been touched for 40 years, we're looking at really important things. It's not just the septic system. Yes, the school committee winnowed this list down considerably of things that we really felt needed to be done. And the school committee does not object to a multi-year plan. In point of fact, we have been consistently bringing you articles on health, safety, and maintenance, and we have been funding them in various ways over the last three or four years. We do try to maintain our schools, but these were winnowed down very specifically because we think these items are extremely important, not just the septic system. And ... Can I go on? Can I go on to speak to the amendment?
Well, wait a minute now, you are going to speak to the amendment as to whether you're in favor of it or not? I think it's reasonable for the school committee to do that. Sure, go ahead.
I think so, too.
It's okay with me.
The school committee feels that these are very important items to be done. We did not feel that we needed to, they needed to be bonded this year. We are in a concur, we concur with the Finance Committee that it would be better, probably, if we bonded these over a multi-year period with successive things. That doesn't mean that this year we don't need them done, we do. We have brought them to you year after year. We feel that this is a very good use of the free cash we do have. We are asking you to go for an override, and we felt that this was a good use of free cash this year. That's the school committee's opinion, and we do need all of these done, not just the Conan septic system. So, we are concerned about subjecting them to a vote and then worrying about the bonding and that sort of thing. So, we really thought that free cash was the best way of doing it.
The lady at the back?
I just had a question. I'm just concerned about the urgency of these things. If this is put off for another vote at another time, or whatever, are we dealing with any desperately serious safety measures? Are we going to be having a fire marshal screaming in our ears, closing down schools because we do not have an active fire alarm, or any other issues to that effect? That we absolutely have to do this this year? Or, for that matter, what happens if this bonding issue does not pass? You know, so that this could be put off forever, if we work it, if they work it right, kind of thing? So, I'm just worried about the urgency of this stuff, and do we have any real serious urgencies besides the septic system, which has failed?
Mrs. Stuntson?
I think I tried to answer that. What we have is a list, we've had this list every single year, we put things in ones, twos, and threes. Essentially, what you are seeing is the top portion of the ones. The ones, the school committee, the, every year, we have the OMR list, and we also have Steve Deasy and his crew look at everything in every school. Now, sometimes things get bumped up. We feel it is important, we do not feel our children at the moment are at risk, but we don't want to put them at risk under any circumstances. We feel it is important to do those minimal things that we have on this list to keep our schools safe and healthy.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes, I hope I'm at the right microphone, I would like to speak for the amendment.
You're right on.
I'm right on?
You're right on.
The free cash position is important, and we feel it is important to the interest rate that we are likely to see in borrowing money for all of the expenditures that the town has undertaken, the twin schools and the sewage system. That money will be borrowed in the next year or so, and free cash is, we understand, is an important determiner of the interest rate that the town will have to pay. Now, how important it is is a subject of debate. At one point, it was said that free cash had to be 5%. 5% of a $40 million budget is $2 million. We're now at 1.5. If we bond, if we pay the full $375, we're down around 1.1, 1.2 million. We're pushing half of what we really should have as free cash. And the septic system has been presented as the greatest emergency, according to my understanding, of the emergencies in the list, and so the motion is to fund that out of free cash immediately, and to put the others on a bonding, because the maintenance of the schools is an ongoing expense, and free cash is not an ongoing source of revenue. The maintenance must have money raised to pay for it as it goes along, and bonding is the most reasonable way to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey, did you have a point of clarification? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One of the things I would like to clarify here, to make sure, the amendment differs from the motion in how the same things are funded. Regardless whether we go the amendment or the motion, the items addressed by Mrs. Stuntson will be taken care of during FY 2000. The debate is over how it is funded and expensed.
Mr. Hunter?
Mr. Moderator, I rise to speak as an individual about a failure of process here, and I find myself agreeing with Mr. Cadillac, which is slightly frightening.
That's close, that's close, but he's smiling, so he's not upset. Go ahead. He says he'll take support from any source.
I assure the meeting that I think that these items need to be done. However, I do have a little trouble with the process that we've come to, because obviously our leadership coordination has failed, since the Selectmen, or at least this Selectmen, was very surprised when the FinCom, for the first time tonight, to my knowledge, said that they were going to move to bond part of these articles. Now, I'm not complaining that that shifts them into the APS portion of the debt service that the town carries. What bothers me is the process, and when we've discussed this at great length, and indeed, the Selectmen wanted to support all of these items and divided three, two, as to how the three of us that were in the majority want to take it out of free cash, the two that were in the minority wanted to bond it, but they wanted to make it subject to a debt exclusion override, so there would be a stream of revenue to support these items. They need to be done. The FinCom has taken another route here, which is fine, and the meeting may well choose to do that, and I won't get too upset about that. But the boards are supposed to be talking to each other, and I thought we were.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, can I support the amendment from here?
Yes, you certainly may.
Thank you. I support this amendment, and the primary reason is that ever since this town has had a Finance Committee, one of the important, of the thousands of functions a finance committee, one of the important, of the thousands of functions of our finance committee has been to decide how much money we need to keep in free cash. And therefore, I think it would be foolhardy for us to disagree with our own finance committee on this particular issue. I think we should support the finance committee. Thank you.
I'm gonna take one more speaker on this, and I'll take the gentleman at the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bob Sisk. I'm at 76 Main Street. I have a question for the finance committee. Tom, if you could possibly help me out on this. We are going to be bonding the two schools, it'll be roughly in the $50 million area, and I guess I understand in bonding, it's based upon how much free cash you have. Now, I recently heard a figure of 5%. Would that be a rule of thumb, correct?
That is, that is a rule of thumb that is recommended by the Massachusetts Association of Finance Committee. There is nothing sacred about that. So, if some towns are up to 9%, you know, like Lincoln, etc., other towns are down around 3% like us, Menando.
So, if, so if we were going below the 5%, it might affect us on the $50 million of .1%, 2% and so forth?
Yes, sir, that is one of the many aspects that the bonders look at, and it could possibly affect the larger one, and we just think this is a judicious way.
Thank you.
All right, I see nobody standing. We'll vote on the amendment. All in favor?
All in.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask for it yet, this-
My question, if I could speak?
Yeah, go right ahead.
My, I just wanna-
Name, please, and-
Oh, sorry, Michael Biellas, 80 Willow Street. Now, if the amendment passes and the article passes, then this goes to a vote, an election vote, and has to pass by a majority? Is that what it is?
I'm gonna have Mr. Mackey answer that question.
It's my understanding, this is on the local schools, this vote tonight, if you vote yes on the amendment, you have voted on how you want to bond the items that are in the main motion. So, if you vote the amendment, you're gonna get the items you got in the main motion.
So, it doesn't go to a town vote? I mean, a-
One at a time, please, one at a time. Was your question answered, sir?
No.
No? Well, he's saying not no, so, Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator, I may be detecting the confusion here. I think there is a sense that a bonding would require an override vote, which is not the case. There is nothing in this motion that calls for a subsequent override vote. Is that the problem? I think it should be clear to everyone voting that whatever this town meeting votes is the end of that process.
That is correct.
Let us now vote on the amendment.
Point of order?
Yes, what is your point of order?
As I understand it, there is, if you don't, this is not for a debt exclusion, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Right. But there is no revenue stream that has been dedicated in the budget to pay for this, other than from free cash?
This is not a point of order, Mr. Mullin. This, you're not asking for a point of order, you're asking for clarification.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's a clarification.
Let's try it one more time. Ask your question, because I'll bet if you're confused, a lot of other people are as well. Ask your question, and let's see if we can get it answered once and for all.
The question is, first of all, it's been answered, that you're not intending to do a debt exclusion override, which generally speaking, I think that's a prudent way to go, except there's no revenue stream that is currently allocated to pay for this because the source of the money was free cash. Now, there's no free cash, it's gonna come from somewhere, which will, this effectively would mean a reduction in the Acton Public Schools budget for other things. Is that true or false?
I'm gonna have Mr. Mackey explain that.
It's my understanding that the use of free cash is what leads us next year. Remember, that isn't insured from year to year. It rolls over every two years what is left. It is my understanding that when the bond is approved, that is the stream of cash that will be used this year and will be paid off, will be paid off as debt service over the length of the bond, say, five years, one year, which I would hope the town staff would work.
And what is the source of that cash?
Interest is out of the operating budget. Bonded, 1.1%.
Mr. Oster. May I, may I address this issue?
Yes, please.
My understanding is that if we do not vote to use free cash to fund this, there will then have to be some borrowing made, which will require funding of debt, and at some point, as I understand it, a debt exclusion vote. It may not be this year, but it may be next year, but we will be required to vote that debt.
Let, let, let me do this.
Let me ask Mr. Callahan to see if he can shed some light on this question. It's an important question, and let's get it answered. Mr. Callahan.
Is this, is on? Let me start with Mr. Cadillac's point, which was in response to the initial question. There is no proposal for a debt override. There will be no vote required. If this passes as a bond issue, it's done tonight. Now, bonds have to be paid off, and the first call on tax money is service of debt. In future years, there may be an interest payment in fiscal 2000, but probably not more than an interest payment. But in 2001 and in succeeding years, the debt will have to be paid off, and that will come from taxes first of all. Debt service has first call on taxes, and that means those dollars that are spent to pay off that debt in future years can't be used for some other purpose.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Cadillac.
I completely agree with Mr. Callahan. I would only like to add the amount that we're talking about in answer to Mr. Mullin's concern on the source of funds. We're talking about $375,000 to be paid off over some undetermined but probably short number of years, three, perhaps five. We're talking about $70,000 a year, $80,000 a year. That's a, I really hate to use that word because it was used yesterday, but drop in the bucket comes to mind. We're not talking about anything that is going to substantively change the finances of this town, and the source of funds to pay this off, as Mr. Callahan just said, just comes from the yearly $43 million that we spend as a town. It's not a big deal.
Mr. Liberty, did you have a point of order?
I do believe we're dipping into advocacy, and I will stay out of advocacy, but the question that was raised, as I understood it, is what impact does this amendment have? I believe the one point that has not been made, at least not recently, is that this amendment, if it passes, means that in order to fund the rest of this, that all of the rest of the capital other than the septic, will move from a 50% vote of this meeting to a 2/3 vote, and should that 2/3 fail, those capital items will fail. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think that was a point of order, but that's all right. You're accurate in what you say. We'll now vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That's pretty close. Let me, let me try it with standing. All in favor of the amendment, please stand. Would all opposed, opposed, please stand. I can't tell. The tellers will have to count the vote. Mr. Katie, your team is in action. Would all the tellers, please come to the back of the auditorium down here, please.
So, part of the town started moving around rolling is this choice stuff, not the choice stuff, open enrollment stuff?
Yeah, well-
You're responsible for kicking them through nonsense. We live on my husband's diva.
We got an airplane that's supposed to do here.
For an hour.
So, is he here first?
I'm only in the crowd about half the time.
Are we ready for the noes, Mr. Katie? We're ready for the nays. Would all opposed, all opposed to the amendment, please stand.
Why these people are opposed to the amendment?
They realize it means $80,000 to be from within the budget.
I bet half of them don't understand that.
They are doing whatever the school committee does because they're here to support the schools. Rocket science.
That, that I'll buy. That I'll buy.
Did Donna leave? She was at the talk, Donna and Jesse.
Yeah, well, Jesse's point of order.
Sneezy call of race.
Well, at least, Cavarretta and Reese are, they made their little campaign speeches. Decavarretta made a speech, and Pam said something about it's not to be used as a speech-making forum, so I won't, and then she proceeded to-
Do you do it?
-speak on her own behalf for five minutes.
Yes, it does look like it's important to use it all.
Yeah.
I can't like to digest it enough. I'm just tired.
I'm not sure that it's gonna be bad.
I feel lousy. I haven't eaten anything all day, and now, for the first time, I'm actually hungry. But I'm still at the point where I couldn't actually think of anything that I think I could swallow, so. Just looking forward to sitting, because there's so many different kinds of food going around this year, I think we've had every single one. Sure, sitting up here, I'll get warm. I like that, it kind of like reminds me of being in an airhead, like nowhere. I swear when I was traveling, I thought I caught everything and anything on the entire airplane. This kind of has its name.
I thought you would like it. I moved at the town race and appropriated $175,000 to be expended by the Acton School Committee for the purpose of repairing or replacing the septic system at the Conan School.
Do you have that written, Mr. Cadillac, you do?
I don't know if they have any kind of expensive septic system to translate to the events that are gonna be-
The amendment is in correct form. I will take a second of the amendment. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Cadillac, to your amendment.
Very simply, $550,000 out of free cash, which is now the original motion, takes free cash down to a level where we have problems. In addition to what has already been discussed as to the impact, or at least the speculative impact, of the level of free cash on bonding, there's also the simple fact that there are many different issues, unresolved, serious problems in the town, starting with the sewer project, which is now, has expended somewhere over $2 million with considerable lack of clarity as how that will be paid for, the ultimate fate of the town building, possibly costs that may not have been anticipated in the various building projects. These are the sort of known potential problem areas that may require use of free cash. Free cash has classically been saved for one-time-only expenditures. Buying, you know, a piece of land that comes on the market, which we have been waiting to buy, is a good way to use free cash. This, as you've already heard, is step one of a yearly maintenance cost. If we fund this out of free cash, what are we gonna do next year? Pass an override? We won't have free cash each year to do it. Therefore, the major reason for this amendment is to remove the $550,000, $550,000 free cash transfer that is in the original motion, and to fund the $175,000 for the Conan septic repair out of regular tax revenue, which is not a problem. Once again, remember, if we use free cash for this, we're gonna be standing here next year, wondering what are we gonna do then, and that's not a solution. So, please, support this amendment. Let's try this one.
I will, I will now ask for the boards, if they are prepared to comment on the amendment to do so. Mrs. Stuntz, I see you're standing there. You may comment on the amendment.
Charlie said, I just, I just need to have this made clear for me. Charlie, this amendment takes $175,000 out of the general revenues. That has to come from somewhere. There are several choices. There is the town budget, which you've already voted. There is the Acton Public School budget, which you've already voted. Since it's a public school or article, I won't put up the Acton Boxborough assessment. Or, there's free cash, which we can always vote at the end of this town meeting to use for this article if we so desire. I, the septic system is necessary, fire alarms are necessary, electrical service, which is 45 years old, is necessary. I don't see separating this out, and I don't see where the revenue is coming from to fund it if it isn't from the operating budget that we, the operating budgets that we have just voted.
I can answer that.
You're, you're opposed to the amendment- You're opposed to the amendment, I would gather. One response, Mr. Cadillac, to the question.
I will simply answer the question of where does the money come from. It comes from general revenue. I will remind you that under Article 14, you judiciously agreed with the amendment that reduced the originally proposed amount by $160,000, and that was already $20,000 less than the original, original motion. So there's $180,000, which is $5,000 more than we thought we had, even if we pass this. No, it does not have to come out of operating budgets. It comes out of general revenue, just like all the other articles that are not operating budgets that you vote for, including the municipal ones. That's where the money comes from. Does that answer your question?
I think that is a sufficient answer to the question. Mr. Jarboe?
Actually, I'll wait until we hear the selectmen and the finance committee.
Yes, fine. Mr. Ashton?
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen supported the original article for $550,000 through use of free cash. We continue to support that article, and we do not support this amendment.
Finance Committee, Mr. Evans?
We say the same thing that you just heard from the selectmen.
Now, Mr. Jarboe. I move the previous question. Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Debate is cut off. We'll vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Opposed, say nay. The amendment fails. Are you going to move the previous question again? Not needed. Well, maybe it is needed. Go ahead, if you will. The gentleman's standing over here, and I should give him his fair shot. Then you, Mr. Jarboe. Yes?
John Massaccio, 8 till Drive. I move the question, please.
It's nice to see we still have a sense of humor at this hour. A second? Thank you, Mr. Gilberti. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Debate is cut off. We will now vote on the motion. The main motion, do you all know what it is? It is to appropriate $550,000, and the $550,000 will come from free cash. We will now vote on the motion unamended. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Fredericks?
I move to adjourn, only in order to convene tomorrow night in the fieldhouse at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Moved and seconded to adjourn till 7:00 PM tomorrow night in this auditorium. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion is carried.